Okay, Elena, are we ready to go?
We should be all set.
Fantastic. Okay. Good evening. I am calling this public meeting to order in accordance with the Massachusetts Wetlands Protection Act, MGLC 131, Section 40 in the Boston Wetlands Ordinance. Boston City Code Ordinance is Chapter 7-1.4. The Boston Conservation Commission will hold this virtual public hearing tonight on December 13th, 2023, to review the following projects to determine what conditions, if any, the commission will impose in order to protect the interest of the public and private water supply, groundwater, prevention of pollution, flood control, prevention of storm damage, protection of fisheries and land containing shellfish, and protection of wildlife habitat. This evening's public hearing will be followed by our regular meeting. In accordance with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, we are conducting this meeting online to ensure public access to the deliberations of the Conservation Commission. The public may access this call through telephone and video conferencing. Additionally, the meeting is being recorded. If you do not wish to be recorded, please turn off your video. Members of the public may have an opportunity to ask questions and provide public comment on applications and discussions. To do so, please raise your hand or type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff directly via email at cc@Boston.gov or via X formerly known as Twitter by tagging that the handle @BostonEnviron and using the hashtag #ConConHearing. For the record, I am Michael Parker, Chair of the Commission. Could staff present please identify themselves?
Elena Itamarri with the Environment Department.
Christopher Adams with the Environment Department.
Didi Hernandez with the Environment Department.
Great, thank you. Now I'll call the role of Commissioners present. Commissioner Sullivan?
John Sullivan.
Commissioner Long?
Nick Long.
Commissioner Condon?
Condon Thurgood.
You, Commissioner Richmond?
Alice Richmond.
Commissioner Herbst?
Anne Herbst.
Okay, first item on the agenda this evening is notice of intent for DEP file number 0061973 and Boston file number 2023-063 from Fort Point Associates on behalf of the Esplanade Association for the proposed construction of a new welcoming destination located at 280 Charles Street in the West End, Boston. Resource areas are at 25-foot riverfront waterfront area and 100-foot buffered in bank, as continued from the November 15th, 2023 hearing. Elena, I believe that the applicant has requested a continuance?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to continue this matter?
So moved.
You have a second? Thank you, Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond? Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That carries 6-0. Okay. Next item on the agenda is a request for determination of applicability from AARP US Inc. on behalf of RHDC 70 India LLC, East India LLC, for the proposed installation of deployable barriers along the perimeter of the ground floor of the garage as part of a flood resiliency retrofit at 70 India Road downtown. The resource areas land subject to coastal storm flowage. Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good, good evening. This is Derek Anderson with AARP. I'm Sheafar Company representative on this project. Thank you.
Great. Anyone else?
I believe we also have Michelle Silverwood, also with AARP on the call here.
Okay, floors are yours.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate all your time this evening. I will be quick here. If we can jump to the slides, we thank you so much. Next slide. So this is a request for determination for the Boston Harbor Garage's property shown in the image here. You can see just for context, New England Aquarium, top left, Harbor Towers, top right, the Greenway at the bottom of the image here. The, I will go through a quick overview of the project. This is for flood protection system, a deployable system that will be deployed prior to a flood, a storm surge flood event and removed immediately after a storm surge flood event. No other works other than the flood protection system are proposed. Also note, we are joined by Steve Mitchell, representing Sheafar Company as well.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
So I'll go through the project quickly and talk about impacts to mitigate proposal to mitigate impacts on the resources as well as what the flood protection system is itself. Next slide, please. So map of the site showing the flood protection, the flood boundaries here. We are to orient ourselves, the dashed black lines show the location of the garage. As you can see, the bulk of the site is really mostly just exposed to the FEMA 0.2%. That's the 500-year flood extends in orange. The corners at the northwest and southwest of the site are just within the FEMA base flood elevation, the 1% or 100-year storm shown in light blue. Generally, what we are proposing to do is install a deployable flood protection system to reduce the risk of this building from present-day flooding. So we're protecting, you can see there are the design flood elevation buildup. We're protecting against the present-day flood, which is elevation 10 NAVD 88. That's about 16 and a half Boston City Base, plus a foot of freeboard. So really what we're trying to protect against is up to about 11-foot NAVD 88, 17 and a half Boston City Base. As existing ground elevation varies by about a foot and a half across the site, what that means in practice is the flood protection systems, which we'll show in a moment, are on the order of 12 inches tall to 25 inches tall on the site. So not, not super big systems here. The resource area we are within, as you can see from the flood map here, is land subject to coastal storm flowage. We are 100 feet away from the bank itself. Next slide. So what we're proposing to do, just some quick images so people can see what to expect out here. We're proposing four different types of flood protection systems. And again, these are all meant to address immediate flooding that's already impacting the neighborhood. So the present-day 100-year storm plus a foot of freeboard. These are all deployable systems that will be brought out just prior to a storm surge event, removed immediately after. At top right, the first of the four systems that are part of the overall flood protection system is a flood panel system. This is basically a panel that is laid down over the vents on the ground and bolted to the ground to prevent water from going into the ventilation system vents and down into the garage. On the image at the top left, we have a fast log stop log system. These are located immediately at building entrances, primarily in this case where we have a concrete facade to attach to. You can see there, there needs to be some fasteners to the building and to the ground. Bottom left is a flood stop barrier. This is basically a kind of looks like a plastic jersey barrier. These are being located at building entrances where there is glass facade, where we don't have the ability to fasten into the building. So these don't require any fasteners at all. And then there's a small portion of the site where the facade really doesn't accommodate any of those types of systems. And we're putting in a few sandbags and I'll show where that is. But generally, what we're looking at here for modifications to the site are very minor. Installation of ground anchors, there's a word missing on the slide. Apologize for that. Installation of ground anchors into the existing concrete and asphalt surfaces up to six inches deep. So just bolts, basically, those are removed when the system's not in place. And there's a cap that's put there, which will be flush with the surface, so there's no tripping hazards. And in a couple locations, we are removing and replacing some concrete and asphalt surfaces. Very limited removal and replacement just to accommodate a flush surface for these systems to sit upon so that water doesn't travel underneath them after they're installed. As far as mitigation of the resource area, just real quick, there's no increase in impervious area proposed and no work is proposed outside of existing paved areas. So all work is on existing paved areas. Be minimal modifications to the paved areas, as I mentioned, just immediately at the locations of these sites. We're not proposing any other work on site. There's no work proposed to the building itself. As the systems are installed, immediately at building entrances and only prevent water from entering the building itself. There's no reduction in flood storage capacity to the flood plain. And similarly, as the building has a glass facade, protecting the building from flooding will reduce the risk of that facade being damaged and debris from the building floating out into the neighborhood and causing damage elsewhere in the neighborhood if there were to be a significant flood event. We are proposing to minimize temporary disturbances to the site. So we'll be, you know, coming in and out pretty quickly during construction. And similarly, post-construction, the work would be deployed just prior to event and taken down immediately after. And then again, during construction, there will be erosion sediment controls in the form of catch basin inserts to prevent any sediment going into the catch basins as well as removal of any sediment from the construction site at the end of each, each working day. And then finally, we are supporting the city's resiliency plans. We are not in a location where precludes any work proposed by Climate Ready Boston or other subsequent city resiliency initiatives. And it answers the call from the city's Climate Ready Boston reports that individual buildings protect themselves at the building level in addition to any eventual district-scale flood protection systems. Next slide is the last one, just to quickly show the locations of these. So that flood panel goes on the four vents you can see in green at the four corners of the site. These are all located underneath the building overhang on private property. So these are not in the public way. None of the work is in the public way. Everything here is proposed on private property. In orange, we have fast logs. You can see primarily at the garage entrances, immediately at entrances there. And then in light blue, we have those flood stop systems as a proposed at entrances at the glass facade. And then you can see at the bottom right of the screen, there's a very small area at the ATM entrance where we'll be proposing a few sandbags. So that is it for the presentation here. Happy to take any questions?
Okay, great. Thank you, Derek. Okay, a couple of quick questions, one or maybe a comment. I've read, I believe you may have authored the AARP report for the, is it the District Council over there?
That's right, yes.
So I assume that you know what CRB has in store for the area and that's why you're able to make the call there that you won't, wouldn't be precluding or affecting any resiliency measures in the future. I assume you've talked to representatives at Climate Ready Boston?
Oh, yeah. Yes, we've spoken with, with folks that, you know, we've had conversations with the BPDA. Specifically there, we've met with Chris Bush, this was a year ago. So when he was there, Amber Galco and John Delzel reviewed the plan with them. They confirmed that it, you know, wasn't impeding any of the Climate Ready Boston plans and also talked about, you know, obviously, we're not doing work to the building. So it's not Article 80 or anything like that.
Okay, last comment. It would be helpful if you wouldn't mind sharing that report with staff. I don't know if we have it in our files, but it would be good to have if you could, if it could be attached to this filing.
The Work District Council Report?
Yep, exactly. Okay, thank you. Okay, Elena, do you have anything on this?
I don't have anything other than my usual quick reminder that if we, if the commission chooses to issue a negative DOA and they want conditions involved, then those should be included in the motion as well.
Okay, thank you. Before I go to Commissioners, just want to remind members of the public to provide public comment. Please raise your hand to type in the chat in the application via the Zoom meeting platform. If you're calling in and cannot use the platform, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine and star six to unmute yourself. Send your questions to staff via email at cc@Boston.gov or via X formerly known as Twitter by tagging the handle @BostonEnviron and using the hashtag #ConConHearing. Commissioner Sullivan, what do you have?
How many floors below gray are you protecting?
What are we looking at, Steve, here?
Two, two floors. Yep.
And, and are you also building in a relatively small some system? Should one of the barriers not be as tight as you pray?
We are including as part of this work some deployable pumps as part of this. And the garage has some vehicles that they use inside the garage for removing water as it is that they can bring, you know, around to the different places.
Right. Yeah, I'm just saying if one of them were to breach, I know you, we all do this stuff in good faith and then something happens, water starts coming in, not flooding, but just coming in. Just, I was just curious how the protection goes. And we got to make sure when you discharge that water, you discharge it not in the sewer, but it's a drain line.
Right.
That's all I had. It's a good idea. How long does it take you to deploy these different type of things? What do you figure, a couple hours or?
Michelle, do you recall specifically with these, I think we were talking certainly under a day, like the specific number of hours? I'm not sure off the top of my head.
Right, and it takes a
Sorry, just to clarify the question, did you say to install or to deploy them?
Deploy. Yeah, I'm just curious how big a crew is needed and how much advance time is needed to do this?
Yeah, I think we were estimating that there would at least be 48 hours prior to the storm event to have to prepare for it. And then depending on the system, it varies. But I think the longest system would be the flood stops, which were those Jersey barriers because it requires to fill them with water to be able to have them self-standing. And I think we estimated that would take a few hours for a crew of two to four.
Yeah, all right. That's all I had.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Sullivan, you jogged my memory about something else. Derek or Michelle, there is, when you deploy these measures, there's nothing that actually, how should I put this? This is difficult. This is difficult to ask. There's nothing that needs, let me put it this way. There's nothing that needs to be tested annually. Basically, you're just bolting some things on. So in other words, except for filling the water for the Jersey barriers, there's nothing else mechanical that would need to be done that should be tested to make sure that, you know, if you don't use it for six years, it's still operational.
That's, that's correct. There's no, you know, these things, some of them, you know, don't have the longest lifespan. This is meant to be, you know, address the flooding that we're having now. So it's not, you know, we're not talking about these being out there till 2050 or something like that. But yes, there's, there's no moving parts, no mechanical parts, no operable parts. It's the bolts, the nuts, you know, the systems themselves, some gaskets on those Jersey barrier-looking things to connect the, the barriers. Over time, those, those gaskets are the only part that comes into play and really they just get rigid and might need some replacement over time.
Okay, okay. What is the useful life for them? Is it five years?
I believe those plastic Jersey barriers have the, well, so sandbags, if they do get flooded, may need replacement immediately after an event. The Jersey, the plastic Jersey barriers on the order of five years or so, although they can last longer. It's really those, again, those gaskets that need replacing over time, while the plastic itself would probably last quite a while. The stop logs are, off the top of my head, they're on the order of 20-ish years. And then the vent protection is 20-ish years.
Okay, so I think what we would also like to have is your operation and maintenance plan?
Sure. Yep.
And, you know, maybe it comes with the manufacturers, you know, there's a manual or something like that. But just so that we have that in the files and so you know that, you know, the system's going to be operational when we need it.
Now, on that, we are, you know, working with a contractor. You know, we haven't procured materials yet. There are multiple products out there. Our timing on an O and M plan was dependent on, you know, shop drawings being approved from the contractor for specific products, as individual products of slightly different O and M. So that's something that we would like to, you know, have the contractor on board and see what specific products they want to supply so we can talk to the manufacturers and get that O and M plan together at that point.
Yep. If you could submit that, yeah, that would be fantastic. Okay, good. Thank you. Commissioner Long?
Thank you, Chair Parker. No real questions for me. Happy to see this. I used to work on the ground floor of this building when I worked at the aquarium. So, you know, if they're still there, they're happy about it too, I hope. Yeah, that's all. Thanks.
Excellent. Thank you. Commissioner Condon?
Thank you, Chair Parker. So Derek, I think you said it protects, these flood barriers will protect against the flood today and you meant the 100-year event today?
That's correct.
So if it's a 500-year event, then it's not protected, right?
That's, that's correct. This is not intended to protect against a 500-year event. Now, a 500-year event is not much higher than the present day. It, you know, with the freeboard we have, in, in practicality, it probably would protect against a present-day 500-year event. But that's not the intent because we would usually add a factor of safety on top of an event if we were truly trying to prevent, you know, that 500-year. And we've, we've really just added the factor of safety, that freeboard on top of the present-day 100-year event.
So if there is a forecast of a 500-year, I think what we had in 2018 was, I think, much lower probability, meaning worse event.
That was very near to a 100-year event. Winter Storm Grayson back in 2018 was the kind of storm of record now. And that was just about 100-year.
Okay, so if something like that happened, we're protected, but if something worse happened, we wouldn't be, is what, you wouldn't be, is what you're, was what I'm hearing. Is that correct?
That's, yep, that's correct. Now that said, you know, that's, yes, I will say yes, that's, that's correct.
Okay, thanks. I mean, why four different ways of protection?
So the, the building is a relatively complex structure where the vast majority of the facade is glass. And we can't obviously attach fasteners to glass. We don't want any weight bearing on that glass facade. You know, we don't want to put a system against that glass and then have the water push up against it and actually have the force of the water break the glass. So we're relatively limited with what we can do without replacing the facade. And where we're looking to protect from immediate flood risks, we're trying to do something that we can get in there now and protect against what's happening now without a major renovation to the building. So to accomplish that goal of let's protect what's out there now, you know, we wanted something that could work on those facades. Now, those systems aren't great. They're good, but they're not, they're not perfect. As I mentioned, gaskets need to be replaced. They're a little hard to deploy. You got to fill them with water. The stop log systems are much easier to deploy, but we can't put those on glass. So we're putting those where we can on, you know, where we can fasten into concrete facade. And then obviously, neither of those would work for vent shafts, which are flush with the, the ground surface. So we need a different solution there. The last bit is just that there's a funky corner of the building where the ATM entrance is, where the surface isn't, it's, it kind of angles into the building. It's not a vertical line that anything could really fasten up against. And we're only, at that point, the building's relatively high. So we only need about six inches of flood protection over there. So a few, a few sandbags at that location was just the most easy to deploy system at that spot.
I appreciate the explanation, Derek, just that, you know, sounds like depending on the character of the building in the places where you're trying to offer this protection and some of the quirks means that you end up with four different ways of protecting.
If, if this was, yeah, this is, this is truly just a flood protection project. If Sheafar Company was looking to do anything else, which they're not, you know, like you might, you might see submissions from building owners who are renovating their building. And in that case, you've got, you know, more options to change out facade types and things like that. And then that opens up a lot more options to have a much more simple flood protection system. But in this case, to truly just protect an existing building as it is with no other changes, yeah, you end up with a few different systems is really, is really the most easy to deploy systems that we can keep things simple for the folks over there, get in and out quickly and protect their building as it is.
That makes sense. Last question really quick. Did I hear you say you, you'll bring the protection material to the site when there's a forecast as opposed to storing it onsite?
No, all the materials will be stored onsite in the garage. It's just that they won't be, you know, they'll only be out around the building as needed before and, you know, immediately before and immediately after an event and then brought back into the garage.
Thank you. That's all to you, Parker.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Richmond?
Yeah, I, I have a question. I think it was answered. But my question was how these very pretty barriers are held against the glass? And if I understood what was said, they're filled with water?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of an interesting design. So they, there's a little kind of flexible gasket in between each of the barriers. And those gaskets will seal the barriers together. There's also a gasket that comes up against the building. Now, there's no fasteners to the building. And what we do is we fill every other system, every other container with water so that the water itself keeps those systems in place when the, when the flood starts to rise. The remaining systems have openings at the bottom so they self-fill with water. So at that point, once the flood waters rise, all of them become filled with water, then all the force is really straight down. You don't have force going horizontally into the building. And then as the waters recede, that, those openings allow half of the water, half of those systems to drain automatically, just passively. And then we need to open up some ports on the rest to, to drain the rest out.
Okay, that, that's really interesting and I'm, I'm, how long does it take to fill these? I think somebody may have asked that question and maybe Michelle answered that, but I wasn't, I didn't hear the answer really well. How long does it take to fill them?
Since there aren't a whole lot of them out here, we're anticipating in the four-hour-ish range, certainly under a day.
And, and this is a John Sullivan question and maybe he already asked it. But what happens to the water that you drain out when it's over?
As, as Commissioner Sullivan noted, we'd be draining that out to the storm drains and will certainly advise Sheafaro on the location of any potential combined sewers out there, although this area does have separate storm sewers.
And is the storm sewer that, that you would expect that these would go to?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. Those are my questions and, and good luck with it.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Commissioner Herbst?
No additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, Elena, did we get any hands raised from the public?
I'm not seeing any raised hands and nothing in our inbox either.
Okay, so with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a negative determination of applicability with standard erosion controls and that the applicant will provide the O and M plan for the systems when they become available.
So moved.
With a second. Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan?
Aye.
Commissioner Long?
Aye.
Commissioner Condon?
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond?
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst?
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries 6-0. Okay, thank you, Derek.
Thank you all for your time. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a request for an extension to the original order of conditions for DEP file number 0061752 and Boston file number 2020-036 from VHB on behalf of New Boston Fund, Inc. for the proposed development of 80 residential units and associated parking infrastructure located at Harvard and Morton Street in Matapan. The resource areas are isolated land subject to flooding, bordering vegetated wetlands, 100-foot buffered, bordering, bordering vegetated wetlands and 100-foot buffered to isolated vegetated wetlands. Wow, those are ones that don't usually come up. Okay. Elena, is there anybody here representing the applicant or are you handling this?
Uh, we have reps or they have reps.
Okay, who's here?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Xiaowang. I'm from VHB. I am this project's representative. I'm not sure if the applicant's representative is here. If not, then I'll just be myself presenting tonight.
Great, okay. Floors are yours.
Thank you so much. Can we go to next slide, please? Yeah, hello, everyone. My name is Xiaowang. And today I'll present for the request for order of conditions extension for the Homestead Green Mixed Income Home Ownership 80 Units Project. Next slide, please. So the original order of condition was issued on December 18th, 2020. And the applicant is currently requesting for the order of conditions extension because the notice to proceed with construction work was issued on March 13th, 2023, which was much later than initially anticipated when the order was issued. And then the construction permitting of the Homestead Green team also experienced the mini permitting and construction cost pricing delays. These delays include finalization of PIC approvals with incorporating D-CAM joint Eastman negotiations for WAPLA Way, finalization of Park Department, sign Waploway finalization of park department uh, sign off on the open space plan and also the resolution of cost increases of five million incurred during the two-year permitting delay. Um, that uh, which was um, required to secure another four million of um, additional public funding support. So the applicant is currently requesting um, for a two-year extension of um, the original order of conditions. Um, next slide please. Uh, now I'll, I'll briefly introduce this project. So this project is part of. The whole Omset Green mixed use development project over a forty-two point five acre land on both slight, on both sites of. Uh, Morton Street in Matapan. Uh, this project is on a six point six acre land, which is east of the Morton Street and north of. Uh, West Main Street and Harbor Street. Um, next slide please. Um, so this project includes the development of eighty units of mixed income housing. Ninety-two surface parking spaces, private roads open to public travel, landscaping, uh, lighting and utility infrastructure and associated. Uh, some water management system. Next slide please. So uh, right now, if you look at the right side of the slide. Um, so on the side, there's a bordering vegetated well and isolated vegetated well and and I L S F to the northeast side of the project site. Um, and there's around three hundred and fifty square feet of um, impact to the I L S F. Uh, because that will be impacted by the construction of the progress pavement on either side of an existing asphalt pavement located between the B B W and I V W. Um, and there are also um, impacts to the um, B B W and I V W's buffer zones area from the, from this project. Um, and to be noted that there is no B B W impact. Um, and we submitted. The um, information during um, the public hearing before we got it, before we got the original order. Um, and the well and resource areas are and will still be protected through the implementation of stormwater B M Ps and uh, comprehensive erosion and sedimentation control program. Next slide please. Um, so this is an aerial photo dated October second this year. Um, and we're looking at the east portion of the project site. Um, as you can see, most of the work is completed in and near the well and area. Next slide please. Um, since the uh, notice to proceed uh, was issued, um, some construction activities have started. Um, this include the clearing and grubbing of the site, establishment of erosion controls. Um, and the placement and maintenance of the protections for the existing trees that were designed to be preserved. Um, there's also rough grading installation of various utilities, completion of the majority of concrete foundations for the buildings. Um, wood framing of numerous buildings and underground pumping installation. Um, and there's also some work needs to be complete. Um, so these work include completion of housing units, completion of roadways, installation of some water B M Ps. And complete the final grading and landscaping. Uh, next slide please. Um, this is the end of the presentation. I'll be glad to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, shall we? Oh, I see you got it in one day before the thirty days that you needed to get it. I just saw November seventeenth, twenty twenty-three, you got this filed. Good job.
Exactly.
Okay. Boy, um, um. Uh, quick question. Why two years instead of three? You still have to construct the housing. Um, is that enough time?
Um, it should be. It, this is uh, requested by the applicant. Um, so there was permitting delays for two, for about two years. So. I believe the applicant think two year is um, adequate time to complete the construction.
Okay, that's fine. Um, I didn't have any other questions. Elena, do you have anything on this?
Nothing on this.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan.
No questions.
Commissioner Long.
Uh, thank you for the presentation. Um, I think, you know, I haven't been to the site myself, so I'm wondering. With the rough grading that's occurred, is there, is there currently basically air soil out there? Um, cause I know the final grading hasn't happened yet.
Yes, and I believe uh, most of the grading work is complete. Uh, but I'm not sure the current condition of the site right now. If you need additional information, I can ask the team to. Take any photos or um, provide more information if needed.
Okay, that'd be great. Um, cause I think that the main thing I'm thinking about is um. When construction isn't active, who might be inspecting erosion controls um, as noted in the order of conditions and um. Making sure that the erosion controls are in good working order. But that's um, really the only thing I was wondering about. Um, but thank you very much. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Condon.
Thank you Chair Parker. As of now, is there any more impediments or is the construction proceeding smoothly?
Uh, I am not sure. Um. Um, to answer this question, I may need to ask the applicant and see if they have any information. But I'll make a note and definitely will get back to as soon as I can. Um, would this help? Would this be helpful?
Molly. Elena. If you can get back to staff, I think that would be helpful.
I'm sorry, cut out for a second.
Yeah.
I was just saying, I, I miss what's going on here. What, what are we looking for?
Oh, I was asking if, if everything is proceeding smoothly now, are there still impediments? And Xiaowei was saying, we don't know. And I believe she was offering to check with the applicant and then get back to us.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Yeah, in this, in this economic climate, who knows? Lots of things can happen, but yeah, it's a good question. Is that already?
Other question I.
Oh, okay. Okay, so um, quick question. Xiaowei said something about um, sending him, um, did you say photos?
Um, I'll confirm with the applicant if they can take any photos of the site and send it to the commission.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm not sure what that has to do with the um, with the delays. Are we talking about physical delays? Commissioner Condon or um. Is that what your concern was or just market delays or permitting delays?
Commissioner Long had a question about photos and that's separate from, from the question I was asking. I was simply curious. As to whether everything is proceeding now smoothly. This is building on your question about are, are two years enough? Or is there something new going on that we already know about? But um, seems like the answer was we don't know if there's any current impediment. Seems like it would be good to know if it's everything is happening now smoothly or not. That's all.
Okay, good. Thank you. I turned the piece of paper while you were finishing your question and. The noise from that, I missed your question. Then I heard photos and I was wondering how that all happened. So that, that makes perfect sense. Thank you very much. Um, Commissioner Richmond.
Uh, yeah, I mean, I, I think the question that was asked is really important. Um, you know, we're being asked, uh, you know, for more time. Okay, uh, and, and it seems to me that that. Uh, question about whether or not the problems that were described have now been addressed so that it's going to proceed. Um, you know, as it should, um, is really important. So I'm, I'm pretty uncomfortable about the answer that she doesn't know. Whether or not the impediments have been removed.
Well, when I asked that question, Xiaowei said that um, they were, they were asking for two years. My question was um. Wouldn't you rather have three? Uh, but she said the project team had determined that they had suffered two years of delays. So that's um. They thought that was a good benchmark for how much more time they needed.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm, I'm only one vote, but and, and maybe there are two, but you know, if you're, if you're convinced that that answer. Satisfies you and satisfies the requirements, then you know, I'm not going to object, but it seems to me if they're coming back. Here to ask for additional time, the question that was asked about, you know, are all the problems that occurred now resolved? Is, is fundamental.
Okay, okay. But if they, if they don't complete it in two years, they can come back and get another extension, but um. So I don't think there's any requirement um, regarding how much time that they should ask for, but I see what you're saying and that's, that's why I asked my initial question. Um, Commissioner Herbst, what do you have?
Um, I guess my comment would be it's, it's their responsibility to ask for the time they need and if they are asking for two years. That's, that's fine with me. Um, that's all.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Um, Elena, anybody from the public?
I'm not seeing any hands and we did not receive anything in the inbox about this.
Okay, thank you. Um, so with that, I'd entertain a motion to extend the order of conditions for a term of two years.
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Aye.
Commissioner Richmond. Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
I vote aye. Last call, Commissioner Richmond.
I'm sorry, was I am mute? I, I voted aye.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so that carries six, nothing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Okay, um. There have been a number of continuances. Continued um, have been notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six one seven zero four in Boston file number twenty twenty. Dash zero zero seven. Excuse me. Notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six one seven seven two in Boston file number twenty twenty-one dash zero one zero. Notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six one nine six one in Boston file number twenty twenty-three dash zero five one. Um, notice of intent for D E P file number zero zero six one nine five seven in Boston file numbers two zero two three dash zero four seven. Uh, the commission will now begin its regular meeting. First item on the agenda is a request for a certificate of compliance for D E P file number. Zero zero six one six seven zero for the construction of a ten-foot wide multimodal green link path located at the end of Arboretum Road in Roselandale. Uh, resource areas, a riverfront area and one hundred foot buffer to inland bank. Elena, what do you have on this?
Thank you. Um, so staff conducted a visit on um, the. Sorry, I was just looking at the dates. Um, staff conducted a visit. Um, and we saw that um, there was still some work that needed to be uh, resolved. So mostly erosion controls that were still in place. Um, and uh, some construction fencing. So. Uh, we'd asked the, the applicant to uh, you know, remove those and we're going to be scheduling a follow-up site visit to make sure that everything is resolved there. Um, and actually shortly before the hearing after getting this feedback, they'd requested uh, a continuance. So they'll be coming back during the next hearing.
Okay, so we just won't vote on this this evening. Okay. Um, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a request for a partial certification, a certificate of compliance for D E P file number zero zero six one six eight eight. From Niche Engineering on behalf of W S Development for the construction of two buildings and underground parking garage located four hundred Summer Street in South Boston. Land subject to coastal storm flowage is the um, resource area. Um, what do you have on this Elena?
Yes, so uh, staff had conducted an initial site visit on December sixth. There are photos available in the folder for the commission's review. Um, at that point, staff noted that there was a fish plate missing. Uh, however, we conducted a second site visit uh, today. And confirmed that the fish plate was installed and that all uh, all, all related uh. Areas had been cleared of any construction debris. Uh, everything looked good to go. So based on this, uh, staff would recommend that the commission issue the partial C O C.
Great, thank you. Okay, uh, with that, I would entertain a motion to issue a partial certificate of compliance for D E P file number zero zero six one six eight eight.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Why does one get a partial certificate of compliance and not wait till they finish?
Yeah, for financing purposes. Um, so as far as debt and recapitalization and all that to get financing. Um, uh, and it could be um, requirements of certain, certain permits. Um, as soon as you button something up, uh, you need to get it, get your final sign off. Otherwise, those sticky attorneys from banks will not give you financing because they'll consider that um. Uh, an open issue uh, as to whether the building is occupiable.
Yeah. Also, I wondered that when I looked at it and I think this project had two addresses, so I think they might be clearing one and not another.
Oh, yeah, and that too. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's good to know, but if you're partially compliant, doesn't that mean you're partially non-compliant?
No. No, 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 because you, you haven't done the work yet. You wouldn't be out of compliance till you finished phase two. So as far as phase one goes, they're in compliance. Um, there does come up situations where, let's say there is a um. Shared stormwater system that needs to be installed for both phases. Uh, building on phase one goes ahead and gets constructed. Building on phase two is not constructed. Um, in that case, you probably want to make sure that that stormwater system is installed correctly, that it's ready to service phase two. Um, but in this case, there are two discrete parts.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Okay, so um, entertaining a motion to issue a partial certificate of compliance for. Um, D P file number zero zero six one six eight eight.
So moved.
Second.
Good. Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Oh.
I think that was an aye. Um, Commissioner Richmond.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote aye. That carries six, nothing. Okay, um, Elena, administrative updates.
No administrative updates tonight.
Fantastic. End of the year, I guess I can think of one. We um. We went through sixty-six N O Ys this year. Not to mention all the R D As and everything else. So we probably had close to a hundred um, hundred items on the agenda. I just did a quick uh. Count while we were having the meeting here. So congratulations, everyone. Thank you. It's a heavy workload. Um, acceptance of the order of conditions. So what we have here. Oh, it's a D C R. So Elena, we uh, came to agreement with D C R on any order of conditions?
Um, unfortunately not. Uh, we're still working on it. So it's a, it's a work in progress. We're, we're excited about that, but um. Yeah, so actually both items that were on the agenda um, have been continued.
Okay, you're teasing me. I thought we were resolved. Okay.
Hopefully soon.
That happened. Okay, um, last item on the agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes. I think just from November twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three. I also have October fourth. I didn't look at the.
So, yeah, so we have the uh, twenty ninth, uh, November twenty-ninth minutes are prepared. The October fourth ones are not.
Okay, great. Um, uh, I looked at them. I made a few uh, edits. Uh, so with that, I would uh, entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes from November nuh, uh, twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
So it moves.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sullivan.
Aye.
Commissioner Long.
Aye.
Commissioner Condon.
Upstain.
Okay, Commissioner Richmond.
Aye.
Commissioner Herbst.
Aye.
And I vote aye. So that carries five, nothing. Okay, I think we're ready to go and uh, enjoy the holidays. Uh, Happy New Year and. As I said, we did a lot of N O Ys this year. Uh, everybody should be proud of the work we did and um, good job.
See you in twenty twenty-four.
Exactly. And I think we do have three weeks off this time, right?
Right, we do.
Fantastic. Okay, enjoy it. You all deserve it. Take care.
Happy holidays everyone. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you.